Good evening. This is Tuesday, January twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-four. Meeting of the Town of Berlin Planning Board. As a preliminary matter, please note this meeting is being recorded and that attendees are participating by video conference accordingly. Please be aware that other folks will be able to see you. The ugly band T-shirt you decided to wear or anything you intend to or not screen share on your computer. Anything that you might broadcast will be captured and recorded forever and ever and will possibly wind up as a TikTok video to be shared amongst your neighbors and friends. This is Tom Samp, Chair of the Planning Board. Permit me to confirm that all members of the board are present and can hear me prior to me calling meetings order. Planning Board members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Jay Teach.
Here.
Timothy Wheeler.
Yeah.
Carolyn McDonald.
Here.
Thomas Andrew.
Here.
With a quorum of the void present, I call this meeting to order at seven thirty-five P M. Tuesday, January twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-four. This is an open meeting of the planning board being conducted remotely consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March twelfth, two thousand and twenty due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts due to the outbreak of the COVID nineteen virus. Specific information in the general guidelines for the remote participation by members of the public can be found on the Town of Berlin website. The governor's order suspends the requirement of the open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location and allows us and encourages us to participate remotely. For this meeting, the planning board is convening using the Zoom platform as posted on the agenda, which includes links for the public to join this meeting. I'll introduce each speaker on the agenda after their concluding remarks. I will invite each board member by name to provide comments, questions, penetrating insights and or emotions. Please hold all your insights till your name is called. Board members and speakers on the agenda, please remember to mute your telephone or computer when you're not speaking. Speak clearly to ensure accurate minutes are recorded. For any response, please wait till you yield to the floor and state your name before speaking. If board members wish to engage in conversation with one another, please do so through me to avoid multiple conversations happening at the same time. Lastly, please note that each vote in this meeting will be conducted by a roll call vote. Thank you all for your understanding and cooperation. Okay, now we can debate Jay's sign initiative or his lofty goals. Whatever we want to say. So recapping you as suggesting that the tough decisions be put upon our illustrious select board. How does that square with having the planning board in charge of changes to zoning?
Well, so I wrote a draft of a new section of the warrant, I mean of the of the bylaw about entitled municipal signs.
Yeah.
And I went back to our notes from the discussions we've had before and we we get pretty stuck on a bunch of content and you know, a bunch of issues where there really can be a lot of different opinions. Our opinions may change over time and technology may change what our opinions should be. And we didn't, you know, I was hoping to get some input from the group that's the parents group supporting the schools and a few other people and we haven't really gotten there yet. But then I realized that you know, if you look at the current sign by law, it seems very out of date because things have changed. So if we could write a bylaw that would put some bounds on it, but then put the responsibility for keeping it up to date as those things change to the select board or other people and you know, highway department, building commissioner, whatever, then we might be able to get a fairly simple change to the warrant through town meeting. And then we'd be able to during the rest of the year work on the project and get some results without having to wait another year. If you're interested in that, we should maybe take a look at it. It's only one page. Take a look at it and see what you think.
I have a problem if you want to share your screen and show us.
Okay. Let me just do that.
I mean, what 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 do we think about the is can the select board make? No, I didn't think so.
Can they do what?
Make modifications to the zoning.
No, they would they would have a way to.
You'd you'd give them the authority to, but maybe then it isn't a zoning issue. It's a town bylaw issue, but even then it would have to be relegated oversight would be relegated. Oh, man, I don't know. You're telling three people they make the decisions about what type of technology is going to be incorporated into signage?
No, no, I wasn't gonna do the technology. I was gonna do more of the content.
Yeah, three people.
Well, hang on a second here.
If you can narrow it enough.
Let me see if I can find it. Oh, there it is. Here. And there. Can you see?
Yes.
Let me just go through real quick and then we'll come back and look at it again. So it talks about locations. I'm suggesting three, but it could be less. Dimensions, which you already talked about. The technology. When it can be lit and how bright it can be. Who manages content? What kind of content? Messaging and maintenance. That's that's all the whole thing. Would you like to talk about them one at a time? I snuck in a third one when Carolyn wasn't looking.
Yeah, well, Carolyn Carolyn's paying attention. I actually have language I found very good language in the Sudbury Town of Sudbury's bylaw about signs that very specifically references dark sky technology.
Highlands.
Thank you. Dark sky guidelines and that all lights need to fall within those regulations and those change. So by just referencing that, that takes care of the light pollution portion of the technology.
That sounds good. We could incorporate that.
I can send you.
Well, we're starting. Why don't we start at the beginning though? So locations. We were talking about two, one in front of the school and one in this town center. And I think a couple of people said, hey, I never drive by either one of those things. So it's a problem. And I was just thinking if we had one down at the new Rotary, would that cover people that go to two ninety, come into town from that direction, you think?
Why the new Rotary and not the old Rotary?
Let me just the old Rotary, the one.
The big one, the big one.
Yeah, we had a sign at the big one.
I'm just curious why.
Because like if you come in from Clinton, the Clinton end, you would probably go through the center of town and see that one, wouldn't you?
If you're going to somewhere on the other side of the center of town.
Yeah. Oh, right. Not going to your house, right?
Right.
End of Jones Road stays closed.
Which it won't actually.
I know that. Yes.
Right, the person doing it, the company doing the work has filed for an N O I and we're gonna hear it on February first, so or seventh. So they're moving right along. Not to have an aside.
What do you guys think about location? How do you feel about those three choices or would you like to? How would you like to change it?
I'm not opposed to it.
I I think I think specifying the exact locations in the bylaw might be more than we want to do. Because so so the one at the center of town, there's that actually hasn't been determined where that's really gonna go.
Well, no, but you see, I got a thousand feet, which is from one end to the center of town to the other. It goes all the way out to the unused buildings.
From the town center, so.
Yeah, you know where the old firehouse is that's not being used?
Yeah.
So from approximately there to the other side is like at the low point when you're going out of town to the east, you know how you kind of go down through the Pleasant Street intersection and then it starts to come up. So it's around somewhere around the bottom of that hill. And then, you know, so so this just says it'll be somewhere in that two thousand foot stretch. Because I don't think we know where to put it yet, right? And five hundred feet from the school takes you all the way to the northern end of the school property beyond the pond, you know, and the tennis courts. And on the backside, it goes just about down to the, I think there's a house before you or maybe is Mark's development, the next thing you hit. Whatever the school property is, plus and minus is about five hundred feet. And the and down at this Rotary. It kind of covers all the places, you know, it would be a circle that would kind of cover any place that we might choose to put it if we didn't stick it in the middle of the circle. We're in Tim's cornfield. You can lease it to us.
Yeah, I didn't have a problem with the locations.
Anybody else want to move on or want to talk about this some more?
So we want to allow three of them.
It's okay with me.
Are you okay with Carolyn?
Um, I don't love it, but you know, I don't love it. So to follow your argument about the third one. I may never see any of those.
Yeah.
Um, anybody coming in from Clinton that may never see any of those. So so at what point do you decide enough's enough?
I think I'm just guessing where if you took all the people in Berlin and said where could we put a sign where you would see it? And we said, I think one time we talked about three, talked about two, we talked about three, and you said, okay, where could I put them where the most of those people would see them? This is what I came up with. I mean, it may not be right, but that's just a guess because I don't know the exact volume of cars going each way.
It it didn't seem unreasonable to me. And of course, the bylaw establishes how far we go, which is exactly this.
Tom, we do have an audience member that has their hand up. If you would like to entertain questions.
Uh, okay.
Michael.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yep.
Yeah, Michael.
Good evening, everybody. These three locations have the people who live in those vicinity been asked. I mean, I know one, of course, I'm assuming the Rotary, the new Rotary is the one by the Rockwell New Village. These things, of course, churn out quite a lot of light. There's also one or two houses, I believe. Like, forgive me, I've only been here thirteen years. I can't remember the names of all raised. There's a couple of houses on the road that goes from the Rotary through to Northborough as well, which might also find this a problem at night. Also, the points raised by Carolyn about the light pollution and in reference to the people in Sudbury. I I I personally question the wisdom of these these signs totally. I don't know why we can't rely upon mobile phones for those updates as well. If you're an interested party to do with the school and I'm a little surprised that the the school sees that it has to have three points around the town to sort of promote their their news. I I just find that sort of slightly overkill. People could sign up to newsletters from the school or have one at the school, which even that I think should be limited inside aside and kept as modest. Anyway, I've I've expressed my opinion on this in a in a previous meeting and I I dread to think of the cost of these things, but that's of course for the for the for the body that's actually spending the money to to consider. That's that's what I have to say.
So the the three signs, we each have a different content manager. We're gonna get to that next. And so the content does not have to be the same on all three. So there could be one related to the schools that has school related content more than other content. Right? That can be chosen. The schools, the parents group and the principal have the people that kind of got this whole thing started because they do believe there's a need. And because the sign they had before, which had little plastic letters that you had to go out in the snow and change blew away in a hurricane. So our schools have had no sign for the last, I don't know, four years, five years. So that's one of the reasons that this is here. And right now, if you look in the center of town, there's a construction trailer with a generator on it, I think, that has a very low resolution display of messages, which everyone I've talked to has really appreciated because there's just no way really to get messages through to people in town, unfortunately. This won't solve the whole problem, but everyone that's seen the construction sign that I've talked to has said they like it because they've learned things they would not otherwise have learned. So this is a way of turning that into a temporary kind of not very attractive thing into something that would be more attractive and have be more informative because you'd be able to get a little bit more content on it. And you'd be able to program it remotely. And we'd have a whole process for deciding what the content was and managing it properly and and that. That's kind of what the objective is here. And as far as the the costs and whether we do it or not, it goes to town meeting. So everyone gets a chance to vote on it. I think our goal is to try to come up with something that we think will be accepted and voted in, but it may not be.
Michael, did you have something else to say or did you raise your hand accidentally?
I would like to talk. Hi, can you hear me again?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, I mean, perhaps then I hear what you say. I accept there might be a need. I mean, I'm not the only person in the town. Maybe you start with one, not three. See how we get on. And accompany it with sort of newsletters or e-balasts on on some type of email or or phone thing, I think. I think going going jumping in with three is probably slightly overkill. That's my opinion. I appreciate what you say about the town meeting and it's got to be voted upon anyway. Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, it could be. Well, we we kind of need two because there are two different proponents here. One is I guess it's me at this point and for the town for the town center and maybe the one down south. And there's a group of people at the school have been working on this for the schools. So that's at least two. And I think if the cost or other reasons cause the voters to want it to be a lower number, can't can't the warrant article get modified on the floor?
It can, but it's usually sticky trying to do that.
Okay.
You wouldn't be able to go to town meeting and change it from two to three. You go from three to two.
That's what I was thinking.
Yeah.
Right. But then the conversation is which one gets eliminated and
Right.
and then it.
Would really go off the tracks really quickly.
Yeah.
Right.
And when we when we put a, we say we have a warrant article we want an article we want on the warrant. After the deadline, the February deadline goes by, can we modify that? Or is that our last shot?
You can, you can, as long as it's not wholesale changes.
Right, minimally.
Minimal changes.
Right, because it.
Changing it from three to two, we could, do you think?
You could do that.
Because it gets sent to town council for review. So there is only certain things that can be modified.
Yeah. Okay, you want, do you want to? Thank you for your input, Michael. Do you want to keep going?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yeah, before we before we leave that listening to this, I'm thinking the two that we've been requested, the two needs that we see are one for the town generally for this, and I think the center of town is a decent place for that. And one for the school and the school premises is a decent place for that. I'm not sure I'm ready to, you know, go wandering around and deciding where other things that nobody's particularly asked for should be placed. So I'd be in favor of just two.
Yeah. What do you? What do you guys, Tom and Carolyn?
Well, you know how I feel about that.
You want zero.
The less the better.
Where'd Tim go? We lost him.
No, he's here.
Oh, I think I have to push a button here.
Yeah, he's he's out plugging in the sign.
I'm listening.
Did I strike the third one or what do you think?
I I I think I I think Thomas is correct in why are we including something that hasn't been asked for?
Yeah, so not from Tim. I mean, agree with that.
Ah, I I'm ambivalent. I mean, I I I I kind of, you're saying that the third one, they're gonna be down at the Rotary is still going to be an extension of the one in the town as far as who controls the content and.
Well.
Or is it gonna be a third stakeholder?
The way I wrote this was that each sign would have a content manager and it could be the same person.
Okay.
One, right? I was just trying to leave it as much flexibility in as possible.
Yeah.
Because I'm figuring a lot of these decisions, like we're saying, you know, once you kind of get farther down the road planning it, and then once you implement it, there's going to be a bunch of decisions that you may change. You know, you may get feedback like the hours, you know, we may decide to change the hour. So I wouldn't want to put that in a bylaw really. I'd rather ideally have that or or have it can be overridden. I think I wrote in that it could be overridden by the select board. It could be modified.
Yeah, which we we need to to talk about. My my feeling is too on the third sign is if people love the first two signs and Carolyn is, you know, packing up picnics to have summer meals out by the light of them. Then maybe, you know, it it shouldn't be hard to get a third sign if people see it and like it. And there's a demand for it, but yeah, I'm I'm not really in favor of anticipating a demand that I I haven't seen demonstrated.
Well, so the other thing, though, Thomas, is that it says it said a sign shall be allowed. But that doesn't mean that we're gonna buy it, right? Because the other thing that has to go along with this is a proposal to buy the signs. So we could allow three of them, but just buy two. And like you say, wait and see whether people really have a need for a third one. And if they don't, we never do it.
Yeah, unfortunate part is if you build it, they will come. You allow it, they'll build it.
Mm hmm.
Right, but I also just anticipate the argument of, well, why put one there? Why don't well, I live on West Street. Why can't we have one? I live on you know, I live on sixty-two. That's the one of the gateways to the town. Why don't we put one there? Yeah, it just it just opens a can of worms that I don't think so. I don't think worms are your intention.
Right, and you can demonstrate, listen, we got one municipal use, we got one school use, and that's it.
Okay, so that means though, if it turns out we do want another one, then we have to go to town meeting and modify the.
You have to amend the bylaw, but that should be relatively simple, just a third location with the same, you know, with an established bylaw.
Okay, I'm gonna take that one out then, take the third one out. There we go. The size. I can't remember where we were. I think we were gonna measure some signs that we looked at and I haven't.
Thought it was three by five, right? In that neighborhood?
I don't know if five is wide enough. I think it needs to.
It wasn't much more than that though.
Let me put that in and then we may want to go back and modify it after we take do some homework. And we did say, I think we already covered the two-sided question. I think we said that it could be two-sided.
And you need to put up there per side.
Oh, per side.
Because you're not gonna do it.
Fifteen square feet per side.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, person. Okay, it should be down there, right? Okay. So the technology, I'm refraining from putting in L E D because L E D is already not even we've gone beyond that already, right? So I was trying to figure out what are the characteristics of the sign that we're talking about. And it's really that it's composed of digital, you know, of a multitude of small lighter light emitters of whatever kind they're gonna be. Right?
What do you mean? So why you take, why, what are you saying? We're beyond L E Ds?
Well, if you go buy a TV right now, it's I guess some of I guess some of them are L E Ds, but the technology is just changing. There's all different kinds of semiconductors that create light, right?
They're pretty much all light and light emitting diodes.
Well, but go back five years ago, they were L C D. They had lights behind them, right? When you bought a TV, it was L C D. And then there's quantum dots and all these other things coming along that if we want a bylaw that we don't have to keep changing every time the technology changes. I think we need to talk about what is it about it that wants us causes us to have a separate bylaw for it. And I think it's the fact that instead of a fixed sign that has a light shining on it, this is a sign that generates its own light. And it generates in a way that you can program it, which means it's got a lot of little pixels in it.
What are you calling this? What's the heading on this?
Technology, number four.
No, no, the whole bylaw.
Oh, municipal signs.
So where so this is not an amendment? This is a whole separate bylaw saying basically these signs have to be this?
It's it's a section within the sign. I think we make a new section in in chapter nine of the bylaw about municipal signs. Or maybe, you know, maybe we needed to find them differently because are there any are there municipal signs now that that if I if you title it.
Just the technology shall be digital. So you're saying that this that a municipal sign must be this?
Yeah, that's not what I was intending, I guess. Maybe we should call it digital municipal signs. How about that? Is that okay? That's something we can change later too, right?
We just need to be careful that we're not saying that that this has to be this way.
Agreed. That's a good point. Yep. So the other issue was resolution because so you look at the one in the center of town, it's very low resolution. You know, it's like twenty-five by fifty or something. I don't know. And I think there's a minimum. I think we should set a minimum that's based on visibility that we want. So in the center of town, you can't go more than twenty-five miles an hour. And I think if you if we said you had to see it five hundred feet, be able to read it five hundred feet away, it would be on the far side of the bank driveway. If it was going to be put where the current sign is. So no matter where it goes, we would say you have to be able to read it five hundred feet ahead. And if you're going twenty-five miles an hour, we could figure out how many seconds you have to read it, but it's probably about right.
That's gonna be in direct competition with any dark sky compliant. Language that we might put in.
Well, how can you have a sign if you can't do that? I mean, five hundred.
Without, without seeing it, I mean, that, you know, that may have specifications that already answer these questions, um.
Well, I think you gave it to us, I, and we read it, right?
I did.
Yeah, I looked at, yeah.
You just did?
No, a while ago.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay, I missed that, I guess.
Um, I mean, I, I am certainly willing to find that language again.
Well, I can, I can look at it, um. I was in the hospital a couple of times and it may have come in then, and I got behind it.
Hmm, I feel like. Right, maybe even last summer, let's, let's see. Well, I can't quickly find the email that I sent, but I can certainly find the language on.
I can find and send it around later.
Yep.
But, so. The purpose of the five hundred foot, or, oh, three hundred foot distance. Is so that. People can comfortably read it in a reasonable period of time driving at the speed limit. Right? So that, um, they don't end up stopping to read it, or they don't, they're not unable to read it because it goes by too fast. And that gives a way of def- defining the resolution it needs to be, yeah.
So, do you? Do you know what letter height you have to have to be discernible at that distance?
No. We will have to figure that out.
Okay.
And I'm kind of deferring that, cause that whole, the whole topic of. Um. You know, size, resolution, all that stuff gets, gets tricky and it's, and it's connected also to the cost. Right? So, I think trying to define that upfront is gonna make it. We're gonna spend a lot of time on it, and by the time we're done, it's gonna have changed, cause the technology keeps moving.
So, so speed limit signs are. What did I measure? Twelve, ten inches? The letters are ten inches?
Right, are they? That's probably about right, so you're three hundred feet, if you think about it, if you had a speed limit sign where that. Trailer sign is, and you were. Right beginning, right at the beginning of the bank driveway, do you think you'd be able to read it? I think you would, wouldn't you?
So, you can have three lines of text. Each. Ten inches, which leaves you an inch above and an inch below in a three-foot. Sign.
Yeah, that's why I'm, I'm not sure three feet's enough, the sign that's down there is a lot more than three feet.
The. The highway department sign?
Yeah.
But it only has two inches, I mean, two lines of text, or is it three?
I thought it was three.
It might be three. It's pretty, they're. They're pretty big.
It may be, I, I feel like that one may be a little bit larger than what we need, cause I think you can see that, I. I'm almost positive, when you pull, pull out of Carter Street, you can read that sign, and that's. Almost double the distance that I was. Other three hundred feet. So those, those letters and numbers are probably a little bigger than they need to be. But I think. Three feet might be. A little shy of what we need. Want to keep moving on, well, then we keep thinking about it, we'll move on to the other. Cause the next, the next thing.
And I, I did locate what Carolyn had sent us, uh, back in July, and I resent it to everybody, so.
Oh, good.
So the other important things are here, that it's gotta be remotely programmable, cause that's how you make it so we can manage the content well. And it has to have adequate security that nobody's gonna hack into it and write all sorts of nasty messages and show bad pictures on it. And then, um. We have the current bylaw. Says six AM to nine PM. But for reasons like you're talking about, Carolyn, maybe, maybe we don't want to run it that. You know, it's just, you can't possibly make it meet the dark sky requirements. You know, maybe you want to change the hours, the way of solving that problem, I don't know.
Yeah, I was actually looking at it and, uh, a quick scan of it on that issue, which I happened to see. Was, uh, off at eleven and on an hour before sunrise, so. It, I, again, I think when we look at the, the dark skies, we're gonna find that we're, um. At just a quick glance suggested that we are, um, more strict than it is in some cases, and. Um. It's gonna primarily, it's, I think, be useful in terms of the sort of luminosity issues, just, but that's just a quick look as we've been talking.
Okay, that's good. And I think it needs to be variable because in direct sunlight, there's probably nothing you can do, it's just too intense, but, um. What you don't want, you don't want to have enough light. To make it visible in the day and then carry that through into the night when you only need ten percent of that, so it's gonna need to have a light sensor on it that. Adjust the brightness based on the ambient.
Yeah, and that technology, i- it could be a light sensor, or it can be something that geolocates. And that technology certainly exists.
Yeah.
So that it knows where, where it is, what, sure, the weather is a factor, yeah.
Yeah, and, and the sun, sun angle, so.
Yeah.
You know.
And the, um, the material that, that, that was sent to us does deal with that day, night, nighttime issue. Um. So I, I think we need to, uh. You know, we need to sit down with these two things, um, and maybe plug some, plug some things in, um.
Um, this whole thing about content. So, I think if we try to get to an agreement. Uh, on content before we.
Mm-hmm.
Launch this, it's, we're never gonna do it.
Uh, well, I think on content, it, since we've now gone to one town and one school sign. We ought to say that the selectmen and the school board, um, determine the content respectively.
Well, so see what I wrote is, I said there's a person named a content manager, unless we want to have AI do it for us. Content manag- is there's, there's a content manager for each sign. It could be the same person or different people. That person would be assigned by the select board. And the select board has the ultimate authority, so that if the content manager is kind of stuck on a decision. About whether. Something's gonna go or not, uh, the select board's the backup for them.
Right, and, and I'm just suggesting we bifurcate that so that, um. The school department can do the, or the, the school board can do the, um. The school and the selectman can do the town sign.
The problem with that is when there's a conflict, the select board is usually the place you go to resolve it. And going to the school board to do that, I think would be kind of. Tricky, there's a school board and there's a.
I know, I was on selectmen for a long time, and I didn't, I wouldn't, I wouldn't have, I can't remember. Us having to have our fingers in something as, you know, sort of down in the weeds with the. It's a school as what the sign in front of the school said.
Well, no, but the, the content manager for the school sign would presumably be someone at the school. Right? And I think originally, when I was thinking of just the one in the town center. Um, Mary had said she would like to be the content manager, but when there's a problem where there's. You know, a question about whether certain content fits with our guidelines, right?
Yeah.
And it would, she would be able to, she didn't have to make that decision herself, because.
No, I, I understand that, what I'm saying is. The school board appoints a content manager for the school sign and the selectman for the town sign, that's what I was suggesting.
Oh, for appointing, okay.
I didn't have any problem with your structure, but I just thought.
Right, so it, the, the select board doesn't appoint the content manager for the school.
Right. And doesn't supervise the content manager for the school, and the select board in the school doesn't manage. The town sign or appoint the content manager for that.
Right.
And then who is the?
Should it be the superintendent or the school board?
Well, we could ask them what their thoughts are, I mean, we do have a little time to, to make those kind of adjustments, um. I do think they'd want, they'd want to have the keys to the car on that issue and not have the selectmen doing it, unless. Things have changed a lot since I was selectman.
But how do you tie it together? So if, I mean, I think you've already heard that. Uh, this, the people that want signs at the school are gonna be probably asking for more than Carolyn is for the one in. The municipal one, so how do you, how do you tie those two together so that they're not? Different, one of them doesn't have live action movies of the last soccer game.
Well, they don't get that, sorry, that's just not. I don't understand why we're trying to, they've asked for a sign to disseminate information.
So, so the controls I put in on that. Is that. Even though there's a content manager for each sign, they kind of report into the select board. So the select board can say, alright, so, digital signs in town are not gonna have three D movies in great color.
Yeah, no, it's words, words only. A, a, uh, information.
Okay, so if we put that into our bylaw, by next year, we're gonna be changing it.
Okay.
Okay, so if we make it the responsibility of the select board. They can, you can argue to them and, and they can choose to say, let's try it with just words and see how it goes, and let's try it. With some color and see how that goes, and let's try it with.
I am fine having it go back to town meeting if they want to put video. And honestly, if, if more people want video than don't, then more, then that's how the vote will go.
Yeah, I, I, I really don't want to write another bylaw that's, goes out of date so fast and. We don't get.
Yeah, but let's, let's divvy this up, because I think in terms of content manager. I think there's a lot to be said for saying that the school board or the superintendent appoints a content manager for the school. And the selectman for the town, that's the content manager.
Yeah.
What you're talking about, the sort of ultimate control of what's on there is under seven, content style. In which, in seven B, you say that it may include static images or moving images. If, if, as I was just hearing us discuss, we were sort of discussing taking moving images. Out of that, and then that's gonna operate to, to, uh, limit. What the content manager can do, whether they're two of them or one of them.
Right, but look at item C there, um, Tom, it's. So what I'm saying is, let's, let's leave it broad and give the select board the right. To narrow it, which they will do, they've already, they've already sent out a document that narrows it. So we started, the select board starts out with, all you can have is text.
Yeah.
And they see what.
Why wouldn't we do something in line with what they've already done?
Well, I am, because I'm given this, the responsibility of them, and they've already written the first pass of a document for it.
Hmm.
It's just that they can change it as they get feedback from people in town, they can be tweaking it and making it better. If we have to codify it into a warrant article, once a year, we have a chance to make changes, I. I think that's.
Yeah, once a year we do, and again, it's a simple change. Um.
Well, it's.
But we make tweaks to the bylaws all the time.
Yeah.
Yeah, I would be in favor of taking moving images off of seven B and taking seven C out of there.
Second.
Yeah, I don't like it.
Give us something to do next year, Jay.
Oh, but read, um, read the current sign bylaw.
Yeah.
It's.
Does it allow moving images?
It's.
But how old is it?
I don't know, it's very old, it, nobody's changed. It's too much work to change it, I mean, it's, it's a big.
Well, people, i- it gets changed when people raise the need to change it. Uh, as, as this occasion is an example of, um. And yeah, the, the. A lot of the, uh, the sign bylaw is as old as dirt, yeah.
Technology changes, people's expectations change. You know.
And the bylaw can change if it changes, yeah.
Just on them, right, there were no LED signs in existence, it was just.
Right, but so if, if we, if we take out moving images. And next year, people decide that moving images is absolutely the best thing in the whole world and they need to have it, we. Or you put forth a motion that says amend. You know, whatever number this is gonna be, seven B to include moving images. I mean, it's not.
Carolyn, I just think. Having to go to town meeting to make a change like that just seems.
It, it, Jay, moving images is not information.
It's.
It's completely counter.
Our lives.
It, it, I won't. I will, I will.
If we leave it with the select board, they can try it. For a month or something, and they can get feedback from people, did you like it or did you not? And it's may not be moving images, there's. There's all sorts of things that they may want to try. And see whether people like it, things that we don't even envision yet, cause the technology is all moving. Right? When the sign bylaw was written, we were watching our TVs with rabbit ears and cable. That were streaming.
Able, what are you crazy?
It's just.
I, I, I'm, I'm, you, you know how I feel about it. A, a, I'm not, there's no point in going on and on, you're not gonna change my mind that moving images should stay in there. And apparently, I'm not gonna change your mind that it should come out, so.
I, I don't want to have.
That's where we stand.
We're ready for it, but I want the select board to make that decision, cause they can make it quickly.
And I don't, I don't think foisting this on them without even talking to them about that, about it. Is the right way to do it.
Well, my plan was, I thought we had another meeting, cause my plan was for us to try to come to agreement and then get them involved and let them. Way in and maybe make, make changes based on their input.
So then maybe we're not ready for this, for this warrant cycle.
Well, it'd be a shame if we had to go another year without a sign in front of our school, I think that's embarrassing.
They have gone four years.
I know, it's embarrassing.
It's, it. They've chosen to not put up any sort of sign.
Find another school in the state of Massachusetts that has no sign in front of it, no way to communicate with the students and the parents.
So it's, so it's LED or nothing for them.
They, uh, John, when he came to present this to us almost a year ago, said, you know, I'm tired of going out and putting little plastic things in the sign. I had the kids do it and they made spelling errors, every time the wind blows the sign, little plastic.
I, I, I cannot even begin to tell you how ridiculous an argument that is.
Alright, so Mr. Wheeler had his hand up, let's see what, uh, he has to say.
Alright, I changed my mind.
You gonna remain silent, or do you want to, uh?
I mean, I, 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 I'm, I'm not confident that the. The will of three select board members is where I want to place this responsibility, I'd rather. I don't think it should be given to the planning board, but I'd rather give it to the planning board than the select board. Um, and we will. Um, and we will have a town meeting in November. So i- if, if it comes to pass that we failed. In this structure, we, we, we don't have to wait a year.
That we could have that responsibility without having to go to town meeting every time we might make a little change?
I, I don't, I have trouble with making the types of changes that we've outlined here. By three or five people. I, I think the text needs to be tight. And people need to be able to vote at town meeting for, for what they can, you know, believe is gonna actually happen.
Yeah, and if we did what I suggested, which is to take out the moving images. In B, seven B, and to take out seven C, we've got that and then we've got, uh. You know, we've got a bylaw that with respect to content style, um. To that point, you know, is, is ready for prime time at, um. Annual meeting and we don't have to talk to the selectman about taking that on.
Okay, well, Carolyn, are you okay with B without moving images?
Yeah.
So you're good with scrolling moving texts and static images?
Yes. I haven't even mentioned how I feel about full color.
What does moving text mean?
Uh, like the sign. This, this, the text is moving so you can get more than one line.
I have. I, I, I'm fearful of people in a school zone driving along, watching moving text. Trying to figure out. What that message is as they plow into the car in front of them.
But I think the sign we have now does that.
I know it, 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 it doesn't.
It's not in front of the school.
No, and, and I have trouble, I, I have trouble with that sign. It wasn't intended. It was intended for emergency uses. You know, that was the goal with those signs when they were picked up by Homeland Security in the first place. And they got distributed to, you know, municipalities because there was so damn much Homeland Security money floating around. It passed through central mass. There were millions and millions and millions of dollars that are coming in. And they were buying stuff hand over fist. And they ended up buying all these signs for every municipality for emergency purposes. And now, of course, we got the things sitting here. So we're saying, well, maybe we should use it.
Well, it's an emergen, it's an emergency because we have an outdated sign by law.
That's right, yeah.
We're, we're trying to come up with something that will pass a town meeting. That's our goal, right? We're trying to satisfy the voters. So my informal survey, a fair number of people says that they like that sign.
And my informal survey say, says people say this is too much. What we're try, what we're doing here is too much.
We obviously travel.
So if people like the sign that we have, what, what, why are we changing it?
Because again, it's embarrassing to have a construction trailer sitting in the center of the town. Showing low resolution messages about active, you know, stuff that we need to know about in town. I mean, it's like having one with the little plastic letters in it. They're fifty years old.
I don't see anything wrong with the plastic letters.
Well, diversity, that's, you know, a good thing. We can, it's the majority that has to decide, right?
Exactly.
So I'd just like to get something on the table that people can vote on and give us the best chance possible of. Having him accept it and like it and the outcome be good so that they're glad that they voted for it.
Yeah.
And if it. Does not pass.
Well, you got a chance to modify it on the floor or, you know, go back. Well, but you figure out why, why it didn't pass. And, and I think we needed to talk to people, get a lot of. Engagement with people ahead of time or it won't pass because the first response I get from a lot of people is negative. And then you talk to them a little bit and they realize that they really do want it. So it's gonna require a fair amount of communication. With people.
Which I think is an argument to keep it as a small solution if we're. You know, if, if what you're saying is the deck is slightly against us, I think. We ought to keep the solution small and well defined or, uh, I. I think we'd run into trouble on town me, yes, yep.
Yeah, I can see that. Yep. So maybe we should take some more out of here. Maybe we should take the moving text out?
Yeah, that doesn't mean you can't have multiple successive messages. But the moving text probably isn't necessary.
And I'm all for taking full color out too.
I think that's a bridge too far.
Tim Wheeler just put his thumb up.
Well, I know the people from the school are gonna strongly object to that.
I know that it really makes a big difference that you can read red easier than you can read white. But, um, I'm not buying it. You know, it doesn't make any sense to me. And, and you know, if, if this is. Information transfer. You know, to me, it doesn't need to be moving images. It doesn't need to be colored images. It doesn't need to be colored text. It doesn't need to be images. It needs to be text to start with. And it needs to be static and then every so often change. I've been in North Brookfield. I've been in Hudson. I've been in Northbro and I watch those and I think this is foolish. People are traveling at twenty-five miles an hour in those. Circumstances where you gotta be cognizant of what's going on around you.
And they're watching a movie.
Right, I'm thinking.
They're texting anyways. They don't have time to look up.
That's right.
Yeah, you wanted to look at the sign instead of looking at their cell phone while they're driving.
They'll try to do both. They'll be like this, trying to read, driving with their knee. And shaving.
Right?
I've seen it on the Mass Pike in the morning.
Oh, yeah.
I saw it every three day. Oh, what a mess. So where was the color?
Um, it's.
Seven B.
Seven, seven, A.
Four, seven, A, yeah.
Oh, I see.
Yeah.
How about a single color? We're gonna leave a single color?
Single colors, well, gotta give them something to read, I guess.
Yeah, no, white on white, I think works.
No, no, black on black.
Okay, well, we can allow both of this.
All right, we're making progress here.
Um, Michael Harding does have his hand up again. Tom.
All right.
Hi, I was wondering, um. Presumably the school pays for theirs and the, and the town from tax money pays for the one in the center of town you're, you're talking about. Would that be correct?
No, I think there's gonna need to be another warrant article to buy the signs. And where that.
So the, the town pays for both signs?
Uh, that's a whole different topic.
That's, that, yeah, yeah, that's not determined. If they could, it could count, the second one could come out of the school budget. But we can't, uh, we, we can't, uh, decree the fiscal funding. Of stuff in a zoning bylaw.
Okay, no, the, the, I mean, you probably can tell where I'm heading. I just, I just wondered how much these things cost. I mean, and. Jay, uh, clearly you've got a concept in mind that you were. Uh, trying, obviously trying to present very enthusiastically. What sort of, I mean, I don't know if I'm out of place asking this at this stage, but what, what is the cost of one of these roughly?
Um, I, until we have the specifications, it's very hard to say and we gotta decide how much. Of the installation is gonna be done by our, you know, highway department and how much is gonna be done by the supplier? What do we have to do to get electricity to it? There's just a whole bunch of variables. And I think we might be able to get grants. I, I thought at one of the grants that. We had an opportunity to bid on earlier this year. It would cover, uh, signs, the way I read it. But I haven't done a lot of work on it. And, um. You know. I, I don't wanna say it because.
No, all right, it's, I mean, clearly.
About a hundred bucks.
No, it, the, the, you know, when, when you come to present it for the town to hopefully vote enthusiastically. Um, obviously people will, will ask the cost, I would imagine.
Well, there has to be another, like I say, there has to be another warrant article to fund the signs. And it has to identify the cost and where the money's gonna come from.
Yeah, okay, I think that. Clearly, the lesser the, the pain of that one, the, the more likely it is to get approved, but there we go. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I mean, there's gonna be a trade off between quality and cost, right? The more you're willing to spend, the nicer looking sign you're gonna get and more durable and reliable and whatever else. But I, it's, I don't know, I think that's a lot of work to. Get that answer. I think as we were trying to get this done, you know, the school, John, the, the principal of the school got it started. And it just got thrown off to the tracks for a lot of different reasons and, and you gotta go through each reason. You know, there was issues about who owns the land and where's the electricity gonna come from and all this other stuff. And, um, it became obvious that the first thing that needed to happen was the zoning. Bylaw needed to change because other, otherwise all the work these other guys would be doing is wasted, right? So if we can't get this done, it's not even worth. Working on the next level of detail. By the time you're done, the technology will have changed and everything, so. But, good question. Should we keep going?
Sure, yeah.
So I wrote just what we've been talking about for messaging, but I was again trying to get it. Cause you, you, you can't, I don't know how you can write in a bylaw. In detail what messages are allowed and ones, uh, what aren't. It's just way too, too detailed and it's gonna be changing all the time.
Yeah.
And the select board has already written a document saying, well, here's our first shot at it. And presumably over time, they'll keep tweaking it, adding things, deleting things. Right, and what I was doing is deferring it to them.
Yeah, and I guess if we've agreed, we're gonna bifurcate control. Then I would just suggest that we split this between the representative of the school. Um. The board and the, and the select board.
Okay, all right, this is about what's allowed, not about who manages it. That was, we already did that. And the question would be. If there was some important message, um. Municipal message, would you be willing to let the, we'll put it on the school sign? And if there was some really important school message, would you be willing to put it on the municipal sign? Is there a reason not to allow that?
I, what I'm suggesting doesn't not allow that.
Okay.
It just means that the superintendent and the select board have to agree to have it be on both sides.
Yeah, so this one says, because you're, you're talking about management, right, which was back there and we did split it. Here we're saying that this is the kind of content that is the intention. It's our intention basically to get this kind of information, which gives the select board, if there's questions. Something to go back to like the constitution.
There's nothing wrong with A.
Okay.
Uh, it was just B, you know, I, I think B should refer to whoever controls the particular sign. That's all I was saying.
Oh. But would you be okay with the school? Board or whoever's in control of the school board sign saying it's okay. That, you know, one of the kid's parents has a business, can we promote it on their sign, on our sign?
I'm as comfortable with having the school board do that as I am with the selectmen do that.
Okay.
Not comfortable with either one.
And the, and that, yeah, thank you, Tom. That's what I really meant. Um, I think. I think you should just say that.
Period, if you want.
Yeah, not allowed, just not allowed.
I, I.
That's great.
There may be some reason that we can't think of right now why it would make sense, but let's take it out because I think as. We wanna narrow it so that we can get people in favor of it.
Yeah.
And then, uh. I think something has to be said about some of these issues that have come up that I've been asked about. I think we've been asked about in our meetings before, which is who's maintaining it? And where's the money come from and where do we get the electricity and do we have to put solar panels on it because we can't hook it up to the power grid? And, um. Who's in charge of? Well, I was thinking the things, the, the non-content. Like who's in charge of making sure that the non-content part of the bylaw is enforced?
Well, you say the building and it should be building inspector, I believe, right?
No, he's a commissioner. He's building.
Commissioner now?
Yeah.
Is that what they call him? Okay.
Yeah. And I'm thinking particularly about the installation. Cause we talked about size and there may be some more things about height and all that stuff. Who is it that oversees that so that it gets done the way we want it?
Well, I think they apply for a building permit with the building department and the, the rest of it needs to conform with. Mass general law and the town bylaws for construction.
Well, so that's, that's what C provides for basically is. You know, if Richard's responsible for it, then they're gonna have to get a permit from him, right?
Yeah, I don't know that I would word it the way you have and I'm not entirely sure that I'd put it under maintenance, but I would say, you know.
I could put construction too.
It does sort of go, yeah, I guess, um. I'm, I'm trying to, I mean, the, the building inspector. Does code stuff for all kinds of town facilities. Doesn't this sort of go without saying?
Right, it should be oversight and enforcement of the construction. Of the sign should be the responsibility of the building commissioner.
Yeah, let's see what he's gonna. I don't know. Yeah, I, I mean, maybe we don't need, I'm just trying to make it clear. Cause you got all these requirements in here about the technology and size and illumination, all that stuff.
Right, but doesn't the, I mean, the building.
To, um, to manage that. As he may say, uh, it's not. It's not in the building code, right? Or, or whatever. I don't know. Maybe it's not necessary.
Well, they're, they're also the zoning enforcement officer, um.
Yeah.
Right.
And so therefore they would be responsible for applying this.
Okay, because I, I think I noticed in the current bylaw, it does, it, there is a clause that says it's his responsibility. But maybe if this is embedded in the current section nine.
We should just look at that as a matter of drafting, Jay.
Yeah, okay.
If we just drop it in, it may, that may be taken care of.
Okay.
Okay.
You okay with the other, uh? Maintenance and electrical power, just so that it's clear because there's.
Well, you, you just said something about solar panels.
Yeah, which is a huge expense for almost no benefit whatsoever.
Sure, but so, so, but again, the word shall.
Yeah.
Implies that it has to be. I would just.
Well, I mean, I was just pointing out that. The electricity is not gonna come from some private source. It's gonna come from.
Yeah, but I don't think anybody would think that it would, right?
Right.
It's a municipal sign.
Well, keep, the question keeps coming up though. Uh, every time we talk about this, someone says, oh, where are we gonna get the electricity, right? So I was just answering the question.
The, the same place everybody else gets their electricity.
Benjamin Franklin, what did they think?
Well, yeah, okay.
Long extension cord from Jay's house?
There you go.
I am using most of the electricity in the town now, keeping my horse water tanks warm, so why not?
I'm sure. Yeah, we have a koi pond, Jay, and, uh, we use a, um. A floating, um, stock tank heater. To keep it from icing over, so the, yeah.
Meter spinning, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Under watts, yeah.
Yeah, so I, I feel your pain, but only in one little tank.
Yeah.
Um.
I don't know.
I'm, I'm, you know, I mean, I'm not sure we need. I mean, nine seems to me to be saying stuff that is really not strictly non, it's, it's not really zoning and. It all sort of goes without saying, um.
Well, I wanted the highway.
You know, I mean, and, 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 and I mean.
Line item.
What if, what if, what if the school department decided that, uh? They were going to have the custodian and the electrician do something on their sign out of their budget? I mean, I don't think. We need to be messing around with that. I'm not sure we need nine at all.
Well.
Well, I, I can definitely tell you that there is a big emphasis right now. Especially from finance committee. About. Understanding long-term maintenance. And where those funds are going to come from. They're asking everybody to. You know, understand that before they put forward anything.
Well, yeah, and I guess. I guess my feeling is. We're doing a zoning bylaw here.
Sure, we're not actually asking.
We're not actually building a sign, and that's all.
Agreed.
Yeah.
Agreed.
Totally.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll take that out. I think, though, as part of this process, we're going to have to have an answer for the question. Of who's going to maintain it, where's the electricity come from, who's paying for it? Because it comes up every time I talk to somebody about it.
Absolutely, and the answer, the, obviously, the answer to that is going to be. That will. That will be determined and dealt with when somebody makes a proposal under this bylaw. That those questions may be answered through the school budget for one of the signs or the town budget for the other of the signs. And, you know, we can't determine that here.
Yeah, makes sense.
Yeah, so I propose that Thomas reads this in town meeting and stands there and answers the questions.
Okay, I plan to be out of town during town meeting. And if I don't have those plans, I may make one. I think, I think I shall be here, um, but, yeah. Anyway. Um. But I think those, yeah, I think that's the answer, um. And people definitely get a bite at the apple. Before any money is spent or anything is done under this bylaw and they get to deal with those questions. With real specificity, with a particular project. On the table.
Right, like you said, Jay, any. Proposed project is going to have to come to town meeting. And though, the, certainly the question of maintenance will be answered or needs to be answered. At that point.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Um, but we definitely need to insert. Dark sky.
Uh, there are, yeah, as I looked at it, Carolyn, there are a few things that we, we need to, I think, um. Import in some cases, looking at it, as I said before, looking at it very quickly. Um, that, the, the dark sky was more. Liberal than ours were in terms of operating hours, for instance, so I think we just need to look and actually import specific things. Rather than adopted in, in whole, and again, that's just. Looking at it, trying to multitask and attend. The meeting as well, um. And I think there was some good stuff in there, um.
What closer will you be able to, in being able to vote to? Put this, try to put this on the warrant?
Well, do we want to, um? Here's the question, do we want to? I, I guess my question was, do we want to, um? Move up our meeting to the first. Tuesday so that we can work on this in the next couple of weeks. And have another meeting on it, or do we want to? You know, vote presenting this with, um? You know, with, with changes sort of per, you know, pursuant to our discussion, go ahead.
Carolyn and I have CPA that night.
Ah, okay.
Right, I would definitely be willing to have a special meeting. But it would have to. You would?
I would, yeah, it would have to be at midnight, that's all.
Right.
That's fine, yeah.
Like, February eighth is a Thursday.
Yeah, I can do Thursdays.
Yep, that's.
The, it's the Thursday before the twelfth, so.
Yeah. Yep.
How much? So I have, I've never written a warrant article, um. Once we decide we want it. How much, what, how do you get it? What else has to happen to be able to get in the warrant?
You just leave some introductory text that tells where the. Where it's going to fit into the current bylaw and that sort of stuff, it's not that hard. I can help you with that.
And there's no additional review, so if the meeting's only a few days before the deadline, we'd be okay. We just have to vote on it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And, and I. I'd be inclined to, to vote to put it on the warrant, um. But when it comes to the time that we, we have a vote. As to whether we support it, then, then you get a different bite at the apple, you know, so.
Yeah.
You know, I always think it's good to. Give things a chance to breathe and have a public forum and, you know, the hearings and all that stuff and see what people say, and then we can react to those comments, yeah.
Yeah, I.
Yep.
We're going to have to do some community outreach or it's never going to pass. I mean, I think.
But you don't want me to do any, because that wouldn't look in your behalf, so.
And you don't want me doing it?
Yeah.
I believe the, uh, there's going to be a lot of parents related to the school that are going to be willing to.
Yeah, they might, they might think that no, no scrolling and no animated, um, it are actions that they can't accept, but you know, who knows, we'll see.
Or they may just want to get it started, and then maybe next year come back and say, we want to add these things.
Right. Right.
Small steps.
Yeah. It just seems like, you know, we've, this, we've kind of had this for a long time, I think it'd be really nice to get it.
Yeah.
From the voters.
Yep.
Yeah.
And I appreciate what you've done, too, I mean, I want, it, it, it's not easy to screw around with this stuff and you've, you've done a great job.
Absolutely.
And I'm, I'm far more supportive than I was a year ago. Um, and who knows where I'll be in three months, you know, but. And maybe back down here in South Carolina, you know?
Is that where you are?
Yeah.
What's the temperature?
Yeah, that's where, that's where I was at the last annual town meeting, because, um. The new in-laws have a place down there and that's when they, uh. Have traditionally invited us, so I'm going to have to fiddle with that, yeah.
Um. So if the process is, we, we schedule another meeting on, say, the eighth. What? Like, what, what else do we need to do? So I got this.
I think.
Document you're looking.
I think we, we need to get another draft and, um. If you send, I'm happy to fiddle with it a little bit and fiddle with it with respect to, um. The dark sky stuff. And get that around, and I could, I could do that, I would say, by, uh. This weekend, certainly. If not before.
So, so I, what, what's here, I think, is what we've all talked about, so I feel like I'm done on that, so turning it into. What it needs to look like. For a warrant article, I don't really know how to do that, if you want to do that.
But we, that, yes, we can do that, but I guess the other thing is we, we've suggested a few changes, which.
I thought I did them all. While you were watching, didn't I?
Yeah.
Yeah, sorry, you know what, because I do this, I do the Zoom call on my iPhone. And I was looking at the, um. The text on my computer, so I didn't see we're making it, I'm sorry.
Okay, yeah, I, I made, I believe I made all the changes that we.
Yeah. And then, so what I was saying was, if you. Um. If you circulate that. I would be willing. To take that and look at the. Uh, dark sky stuff. And suggest places where that stuff would be useful. And circulate that by sometime this next weekend, so people could look at that and we'd have it well before the eighth. And yes, I can also put, um. The wrapping around it that makes it, uh. Uh, an article on the annual town meeting, but that's, that's really simple.
Okay, that, that would be great, can you give me a date and I'll chase you to make sure you. Get done and get it out on time, I'll help.
Um, and end of the, and end of the weekend, if you don't see it. Uh, is that the twenty eighth? Yes, I guess it is. Yep.
So I'll put that in the minutes that you'll, you'll distribute it to us.
By the twen, by the end of the day, the twenty eighth, yes.
That would be great.
And then, if we want to have a special meeting. Um, by Zoom. By Zoom, uh, someone needs to get a Zoom link from D.
Um, yeah, I think, um. Leanne does it. But I, I can do that, or Thomas, you could do it.
Oh, we, uh, either way, Leanne or Dee. Um. But someone.
We want to do seven thirty. On, um.
On the eighth.
Thursday, the eighth.
Yeah, I think that's what lies.
Okay.
And we'll just have to post an agenda.
Yep, yep.
Yeah, and I think. Better post it early, because I usually wait till the last minute, but we should give people some warning, so.
Just posted that Friday before, Jay, if you remember. And that gives it plenty of time.
Yep, so you, you know. You'll have a text from me on Monday. Um, and that gives us time, we don't necessarily have to have the, um. The text by Friday, but we have to post the meeting and the agenda. Um. And I can take, you know, further comments and stuff and then attach it to the agenda for you, Jay. Okay?
That would be great, I'm going to give you, guys, all a, an invite and then you can delete it when you get the real one.
Okay.
You don't schedule something on top.
Okay.
Already in my calendar.
Well, I'm going to have to delete you from the list then. I'm going to keep you on it, that way. We'll be communicating with each other. There. Done. Okay. Um. What else do we have on the agenda?
So, we were, uh, you were going to give us a little quick update to the school bus storage. Solomon Pond Mall?
No, no, that wasn't me, that was Tom, um, Tim, Tim was going to.
Um, Jay, you're still sharing your screen.
Oh.
Yeah.
So I turned.
No.
Up share.
There you go.
By the way, I did have a, um, I did meet with the Butters. Um, last Tuesday night. And I think the. One of the reasons they were unhappy was the school bus thing is not good. Did you do anything about that, Tim?
I talked to the assessors and, um, then I left town and I was going to talk to. Kristen and. I tried to get some handle. Not. I, I spoke about the noise issue, but. I also tried to understand the, the fact that they're there and.
Yeah.
Excise tax and are we collecting and all that sort of stuff, and it's. Far more complex. The registry. You know, the. Gets involved, where things are garaged is not necessarily where they're. Garaged, I mean, it, it, uh, ends up being. So I'm still pursuing it. Um, because I'm not satisfied with the. Answers I got at all, and that, that my end. Goal is to at least. Um, get rid of the noise issue from the. You know. The alarm system that's evidently trying to tell people that they're going to be. Set upon by police, which as you pointed out is fake news, but, um, you know. That, that. And I. Chatted with the assessors quite a bit about that and they're working with. The Solomon Pond Mall folks right now about. Their general assessment for the whole properties and so they're in the thick of that process and. Um. You know, people are. Talking about abatements and. That sort of thing, so it's. It's wrapped up in a complex series of issues, but the noise one is the first one, I, I mean, that's my primary goal, then I want to deal with. The bus issue in general, but. So yes, I'm pursuing it. I have other news.
Um. Before we get to the other news, the only other thing was the continuing discussion on the. Start of work, work our senior housing, um, initiative, but do we want to push that to the next meeting? I mean, we're, we, we talked about. The warrant, the, uh, the whole. Uh, agenda for tonight stopped at nine and we're bumping up on that now, we spent a lot of time on the, uh, the sign.
Well, I mean, in gen, I mean, there's no way we're going to have an article ready for town meeting that deals with. The cottage housing or workforce housing or whatever, so. You know, as long as I think we're in agreement about that, um. The, the other news is that the planning commission is. With the DLTA committee, um. Put money forward to deal with accessory dwelling units, which is one of the things we talked about last time, so they're going to have some more work on that. They're, they're also. Polishing up some. They, they, they want, I think they're going to come back and ask for additional money in the next round, which would be in March, when we'll decide on some additional funds that'll. Look at a second stage of the cottage housing issue, which is some of the issues that we were talking about. When we met last, we raised a number of issues with them about, you know, how do you figure out the infrastructure impacts and costs and when you consolidate a project like this on a small acreage in a municipality without water and surge, so. Um. I, there, I, my goal is to keep pushing them and, and getting them to. Come back with a proposal to dig a little deeper like they talked about when they met with us. And they also approved eight thousand dollars to do the zoning diagnostic of our zoning bylaw, so. Jane would probably be in touch with us pretty soon because. I think she wants to hit the ground running on that one, I'll talk to her when I get back and, and, uh. So on the next time we meet, I can give you an update on that one, but that's been approved, so. She's got eight thousand dollars to review the zoning and look for inconsistencies and problems with state statutes and that sort of stuff, and then. The commission would help us pursue other funding to. Do a big rewrite of the zoning in general, um. So we can address a lot of the problems that we, you know, in the, in the. Zoning Board of Appeals have discovered over the last few years.
Will the eight thousand cover the diagnostics?
Yeah.
Okay.
And they said. You know, would there be a, you know, one of the people in the committee asked if Jane thought that was enough, and she said she's done it for a couple of other towns and that's the ballpark figure that she feels will work, it's tight, but. You know, and I said, well, if you uncover something that's really problematic, it's not like we don't have a, a thousand here, the, you know, that we could probably throw at the project, so you could complete some stuff if there were some outstanding issues, so. I felt comfortable with. That eight thousand figure. So that's good, that'll be fun, um. Because we know we've got layers and layers of. Text in there and there's probably a, a number of places where. Things aren't, uh. As they should be, and then. The fact that the commission will help us seek funding from another source, you know, um, the state government's coming up with funds to help. Towns like us with zoning rewrites and also. I think we stand a good chance of getting that.
Yeah, I'm glad we're going to do some work on ADUs.
Yeah.
It seems, the more I think about that. That may be a. Fairly quick, it could be relatively quick way to solve the low-cost.
Mm-hmm.
Housing issue without really. Bothering. Many people, I think.
Yeah, and it. Yeah, and it, 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 it may accomplish our objective of trying to come up with the type of housing that we assume the cottage. Course of action might resolve, um, in a simpler fashion and a. In a less impactful way in some regards, I mean, it, it may very well be, you know, you can. If a septic system in a particular lot can accommodate one more bedroom, um. You know? An accessory dwelling unit might very well. Fit in at much less cost than what we're talking about for these cottage houses, so.
I mean, you could do both, but I think, yeah.
Yeah, and I didn't, you know, I mean, I didn't see that we're missing any opportunity to create. Truly affordable housing, uh, from what I saw over the last few months.
Right. I do think, um. That if we, in conjunction with addressing accessory dwelling units, we are going to have to address the. Uh, short-term rentals.
Yep.
Airbnb and whatnot.
And the commission's been spending some time on that, too, so I think that a lot of these issues, they'd be happy to have dialogue with us on.
Um, there is, there are two Karens in the audience, and one of them has her hand up.
Okay, can, uh, you promote one of the Karens?
I can.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Karen. Oh, it says. There, her audio is connecting. Are you there, Karen? Looks like she's having some technical difficulties. And, well.
I guess put her back, and then if she wants to talk, and she can raise her hand again.
Okay.
Thank you. So we, we, as a board, we're comfortable with. Um, pushing this cottage housing initiative and, uh, wording for. A, um, warrant to the fall.
I am.
I think we need more, we need to do more work.
Okay.
On it.
Yeah, we're not.
Right, to make sure it's what, where we intended to be.
Okay.
Yeah, we're not even close, I don't think.
Right.
Yep.
Okay. I'm fine with that.
And I'll, uh, I'll bring the text for that piece that we have to redo from the all-town meeting, so we vote on that again. I'll send that around, everybody.
Didn't we already vote on that?
I thought we, I can't remember, does the, does the clerk know?
Yeah.
We voted to.
Definitely, we definitely did, it's in the.
Okay, good.
Right. Yeah, so that just needs to get to.
I'll get it set up, yeah, good.
Speaking of which. Do you want to, can I entertain a motion for accepting the minutes from the last meeting?
Don't move.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to approve the minutes of last meeting. And the discussion? You know, seeing none, I'll ask you to vote. Carol McDonald.
Aye.
Timothy Wheeler.
Aye.
Thomas Andrew.
Aye.
Jay Teach.
Aye.
Tom Sanford, aye. Motion carries unanimously, thank you. Is there any other housekeeping or anything else, nail what we didn't attend to? We kind of jumped right into the.
Look at the mailbox.
Have to take your truck down there and load it all in the back.
Yeah, but actually, I, I watch, I look at the email all the time now, so that's, there's nothing.
It's all of the stuff from other towns. That we'll get.
Sneak mail is, yeah.
Yeah.
Pretty much.
The notices. And our Christmas cards.
And New Year's cards at this point.
Yeah, yeah, for sure. Sure.
Yeah.
Is there anything else we need to chat about?
Well, I'd say, net with the, uh, the Butters. At the River Road, but it sounds like we should really talk about that at the next meeting.
Hmm.
Enough time to talk.
Okay.
They were helpful.
Yeah, and as soon as I get back, I'll check with some people again some more, so.
Alrighty.
Awesome. Well. In that case, do you want a motion?
Sure.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion and a second, and this won't require discussion, so I'll ask you to vote. Carol McDonald.
Aye.
Jay Teach.
Aye.
Thomas Andrew.
Aye.
Timothy Wheeler.
Aye.
And Tom Sanford, aye.